I'll be sure today I remember. A call to order, the May 19th meeting of the Conestoga Valley Board of the School Directors. This is our general meeting, the second of the month where most official votes are cast, many of which are listed on the consent agenda, which includes items which are routine or have been discussed at our work session last week. Our meetings observe all legal and policy requirements to the best of our understanding and ability, and all agendas are available and related public documents are posted on the district website. Would you please join me in a pledge to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Martin, may we have attendance, please?
We have eight directors present tonight. Mr. Eby is absent. We do have a quorum in place.
Thank you. Are there any changes, additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
There was a minor update to the document posted with the FID action discussion. The FID plans document was updated with some new language today.
Thank you. Anything else? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays or abstentions? If not, the agenda is approved. Board commendations. Congratulations to Conestoga Valley High School students Clementine Johnson and Philip Lee, who were nominated for Hershey Theatre Apollo Awards for their performance in the Spring Musical, The Addams Cavie. For outstanding, supported actor and actress in a musical for their respective roles as Posley and Uncle Fester. In addition, students Sam Radrowski and Connor Lewis will represent CV High School for the opening number in The Addams Family. Congratulations to 41 Conestoga Valley students from the middle and high school who qualify for the TSA, which is a national organization of students dedicated to science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. CV came home with a lengthy list of top 10 finishes, including two number-one finishes at the high school level in the category of computer-aided design engineering and on-demand video. Congratulations to the following CV High School individuals, who were recognized as Students of the Month for March for the character trait of cooperation. Abel Adenay, 12th grade; Edgar Frias Batista, 11th grade; Laurie Yang, 10th grade; and Noel Kern, 9th grade. In addition, Ms. Bridget Mead was named a Teacher of the Month as voted on by the CV High School student body. On Friday, May 9th, Fritz Elementary students were recognized by Pennsylvania State Senator Scott Martin at the school's first Friday Assembly, with his Good Citizenship Award to 4th grader Carter Johnson and 5th grader Jackson Groff. They were nominated by their teachers for being outstanding leaders in the school and were awarded for their hard work, respect, and dedication. Conestoga Valley School District has once again received the distinction of being a best community for music education. This is CV's 12th year to receive this distinction. This award recognizes and celebrates outstanding efforts by teachers, administrators, parents, students, and community leaders who have made music education part of a well-rounded education. Designations are made to school districts and schools that demonstrate an exceptionally high commitment to and access to music education. Congratulations to CV High School junior Alicia Vasquez, who was named the Paradise Rotary Student of the Month for May. And congratulations to CV High School junior tennis player Michael Horst, who was named a Lancaster Lebanon Lead Section 2 All-Star. Kudos to Conestoga Valley High School junior Alonda Thompson for serving our community as a junior firefighter with the Akron Volunteer Company. A group of 4th and 5th students at Fritz Elementary competed in a Lancaster Conservation District Junior Envirathon, an environmental competition for students in grades 3 to 6. School teams demonstrated their knowledge of trees, mammals, birds, and pollinators in the field and meadow habitat. The program supports PA Science and Ecology Steel Standards, builds early interest in environmental stewardship, and develops teamwork and critical thinking skills. Congratulations to 3rd place 4th grade Carter Johnson, Louis Young, Akshaya Guma, and Adlin Schwartz; 4th place 4th grade Louis Slotsky, Provani Ma Dakuri, Adlin Scott, and Liam Genzel; 5th place 5th grade Jackson Groff, Olivia Bedea, Isabella Aguilar, and Kolb Kanjampu. And that completes our board commendations for the month. Dr. Hartman, would you like to do the next section, please?
I sure would. So.
Yeah, you get started.
Okay, so it's a night of celebration this evening where we get to honor a couple awards. First up, we have our retiree recognition. So kind of this is a bittersweet recognition as we have a lot of years of service that we're losing this year in the Conestoga Valley School District, but we're certainly happy for these individuals and for the next phase of their journey. So first, I'd like to recognize Molly Blevins, who is a learning support teacher at the middle school. So Molly, I'm going to read some sentiments that were written by her leadership team at the middle school. "The middle school was lucky to have Ms. Blevins as a special education teacher, a dedicated educator committed to our students and school community. Molly started at Fritz Elementary, bringing learning to life through creative, hands-on activities tailored to each student's unique needs, inspiring confidence and curiosity in the Life Skills Program. Molly's true gift was her ability to nurture creativity and guide students towards personal success. During her three years at the middle school, she established and developed the Support Room, providing invaluable interventions, mentorship, and academic support that made a lasting difference in the lives of the students who worked with her." Congratulations, Molly. Thanks. Next, we have Lori Ditzler. Lori served most of her career here at Brownstown Elementary, but has also served with our pre-K Counts program at the district level. Throughout her career in CV, Ms. Ditzler dedicated her career to providing positive structure and hands-on learning to our youngest learners. Whether students were making applesauce, hatching chicks, or working on foundational skills, classroom instruction was always purposeful, fun, and tied to rigorous standards. Lori was also an active member of the Brownstown PTO and led the way for the installation of the current Brownstown playground. Lori was an integral part of bringing pre-K to CV and served as a strong advocate for our littlest buckskins in pre-K and kindergarten for decades. I also want to note that this year will conclude her 35th year at Conestoga Valley. So in addition to her plaque and her bag of goodies, there's also a little your 35th year recognition pin on the front of your bag. So thank you, Lori, for your 35 years. Next, we have high school foreign language teacher Dean Kunkel. Dean has served 31 years at Conestoga Valley, teaching German, Spanish, and French. For these years, Mr. Kunkel has dedicated his service as a foreign language teacher at the Conestoga Valley High School. Dean has not only taught the language, but has also fostered a love for cultural understanding, personal growth, and academic excellence in students. Mr. Kunkel has impacted countless lives, inspiring students to engage with new languages, perspectives, and experiences. We are thankful for his years of service, passion, and dedication to education. Thank you, Mr. Kunkel. And last, but certainly not least, we have Judy LaFever, high school chemistry teacher. "Mrs. Judy LaFever has dedicated herself as a chemistry teacher at the Conestoga Valley High School for 27 years. Throughout her years, Mrs. LaFever has sparked curiosity, inspired a love for science, and helped students understand the wonders of chemistry, making complex concepts accessible and engaging. As she steps into retirement, our CV community wishes her a future filled with health, happiness, and new adventures. Thank you for all of your invaluable contributions to our school community." So congratulations to all four of our retirees.
Superintendent's comments?
All right. So for my superintendent's comments this evening, we have kind of the opposite end of the spectrum. I'd like to introduce one of our newest buckskins joining us. If you note on my written superintendent's report this month, we have several new teachers being approved this evening, but only one was able to make it tonight. So I'd like to introduce Ms. Savannah Byers. Savannah will be joining us at the middle school next year as an 8th grade science teacher. She graduated last year from Geneva College in Beaver Falls, Pennsylvania, with her bachelor's degree in biology and a minor in psychology, and she went back for a fifth year to get her post-bac teaching certificate in biology. While at Geneva, she was a volleyball player, I believe, and she was also her class president for her class at Geneva. And most importantly, she's a CV alumni, so. Welcome, Savannah. Welcome back, I should say. That concludes my report for this evening.
Are there any board comments on district activities?
Yes, I attended the science fair, the 5th grade science fair over at Smoketown last, this Friday. Yeah, this past Friday. It was absolutely amazing. It was super cool.
Don't be surprised.
Well, you never know what you're going to walk into with something like that, but every student that I talked to, I had a very specific question that I asked all of them, and they were so articulate. It was impressive. They did a nice job.
That's great. We look forward to those kids at the high school level.
Yes, yes.
And I missed, what was it again?
The 5th grade science fair over at Smoketown.
Do all the elementary schools do that, or is that something they've done there?
I think every building has their own sort of spin on things. I know last year, I think they have a specific science fair. I think Smoketown might be our only one that does that. I remember I helped judge last year, and it was something they were trying to kickstart at the time.
That's great. Wonderful. Anything else?
I attended the elementary joint band concerts. I don't remember what that event's called, but that's the best sum-up. Of all the events that I've attended at the high school, that was the one with the worst parking, for sure. Like you, ever want to get a sense for how big our music department is, and all four of our elementary school buildings attend that concert? I practically had to park up a tree just to be able to get in the building. It was awesome. But it's really cool to see all the dedication that those teachers put into teaching these young kids how to play instruments, and the growth they go through from 4th to 5th grade is just mind-boggling to me. As a trombone player in 4th grade, those kids could play me under the table. Oh, it wouldn't be good. So that was the one thing. The other thing I got to attend was a Lancaster Park Day for Fritz, for 4th graders, which was on the piggyback of the Envirathon, which was a really cool event, which some of the kids were mentioned, the teams that placed. Some of the kids were really excited about that. A lot of them were talking about doing it next year. They were really excited about that. But I got to traipse around in the mud with a bunch of 4th graders. That was a lot of fun. Yeah, super cool.
And it helps explain why we won that music award.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I got to attend the Brownstown Family Folk Dance Night on Thursday.
Oh, my.
It was their first ever, and I believe Mr. B., who's in charge of the music there, ran it, and they invited the Hooley School Dance to come out and teach us some Irish dancing, and Jill was there. And I don't know if you were dancing, but we had a nice time. It was fun. A lot of families came out.
Oh, it's great. Anything else? It was a busy month for everybody. Anything else? If not, Mrs. Martin, do we have any correspondence?
I do have correspondence. I have a letter that was sent to the school board. "Dear School Board members, my name is Gabe Halgren, and I am in 8th grade. I played Merlin in the most recent middle school play. I just want to thank you for providing me and many others with the opportunity to participate in the middle school play. The school play is a great way to make friends. We worked hard and built relationships to make an amazing production. The play gives students something to be proud of. I have made many friends through the play. I also get to express myself without feeling the judgment of others. The memories I made during the school play are very special to me. I will never forget my middle school plays. This couldn't be possible without the support of our school board. So thank you for everything. Sincerely, Gabe."
Great. Go ahead.
Are we ready?
Yes.
Okay. So next, we have our Educator Award of Excellence for the spring. I'd like to invite Dr. Annette Fessera to come up to the table, if she would. And I'm going to stand up for this one and hopefully project loud enough without a microphone for everyone.
So. Dr. Fessera, I truly consider her our resident expert in the area of online learning and virtual learning. She's always staying up on current trends, reading the latest research and best practices, and helping our whole CVVA team and even our administrators, who aren't necessarily always operating the world of online learning, keeping up some rest of things that are happening. So certainly well-deserving. So as far as the comments that her colleagues and her supervisor, Mo Upton, who nominated her, had to say, Dr. Fessera has been leading the revisioning of the high school CVVA program since 2021. She facilitates professional development for CVVA teachers and coordinates on each individualized professional development day and collaboration day. She sends a weekly email to CVVA teachers regarding procedures and best practices for online teaching and learning. She has trained one CVVA coordinator and four CVVA special services facilitators in policies and procedures, platforms, and expectations. As the program continues to grow, she recommends new courses to be added to the CVVA catalog. On a personal note, she's also a member of my superintendent's advisory council, so I'm always appreciative of what she has to offer when we have those quarterly meetings. As far as her role with students, anytime a new student at the high school enrolls with CVVA, Dr. Fessera meets individually with them, she meets with their parents, and then she provides support, individualized, ongoing support throughout their tenure in the program. So certainly one of our best and brightest, and we're certainly happy to have her, and she's certainly well-deserving of this recognition. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Did you include what she gets?
I did not mention that.
Want to add that?
Yep. Just wanted to mention, for those who aren't familiar with this award, this is a board-recognized award. The school board votes on, any staff member in the entire district, administrators, teachers, other staff members can nominate teachers or other professional staff members. And then the school board actually reviews all of the applicants and all of the candidates, and they select one, one in the fall and one in the spring. And along with the award and the recognition and the plaque, they also receive a stipend to be used in their classroom or for the program that they support. So, and that stipend is for $500, I believe, so to be used for educational purposes.
This is the point in the agenda where anyone who would like to make comments relative to something on the agenda is welcome to address the board. Is there anyone here from CVEA who would like to address the board? Or any other employee groups? If not, we will move on to the consent agenda, items A through W. Are there any questions or concerns? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve that entire agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through W. Sure.
Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Hurst?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Mrs. Kapka?
Aye.
Mr. Genzel?
Aye.
Ms. Trowbridge?
Aye.
Mrs. Groff?
Aye. That is a unanimous vote. The consent agenda is considered passed. We'll move on to the action discussion items and start with a report from Mr. Kramer, Mrs. Just push the button on your microphone.
Got it.
While the handout's going around, I don't need to spend a whole lot of time on my handout. It's very similar to what I brought out here in January. Time flies when you're having fun. If you recall, at the time, we gave an update for the next plan of financing for the projects, which is a $15 million issue for, again, a laundry list of the projects that are on the district's list. Not a lot has happened, well, a lot has happened in the financial markets over the last four or five months, but interest rates have been hanging in there for you. So again, I'm not going to go through the handout. Very similar to the numbers that you saw from me back in January. If you recall, at that time, I said we'd be back late spring, early summer, to pass the parameters resolution that your bond council is here to discuss this evening. That is just another piece in the timeline. I know Adele- I know Adele has been working with our office to prepare the necessary information we need to submit to the rating agencies. I think we have that ready to go. We're going to have our rating call. We don't expect any surprises there so that we'd be in a position to lock in interest rates sometime in June and close on the bond issue and have funds in the bank in July. So again, nothing new from the presentation I made back in January. I know your bond council is going to go through the resolution. I don't want to steal her thunder, but just to make sure that everyone, we're only talking about borrowing 15 million. For those of you who have been here in the past, the parameters resolution gives us the flexibility. It's a maximum principal amount and a maximum interest rate. Once the dust settles and we actually go to market and lock in interest rates, the folks at McNeese will file a certificate of non-completion. So again, we're just talking about 15 million. The 21 is just kind of a placeholder to give us the flexibility that we need. So I'll pause there and answer any questions you all might have on the numbers before I turn it over to your bond council.
I struggle with trying to follow all this bond talk.
You do pretty well.
Yeah. So this may be a simplistic question, but on the schedules, what happens in 2052 to cause those numbers to change?
That's the wrap, I think.
Right. So if you recall, well, let's look at my handout. I think it'll make a lot more sense.
Well, it shows up on the maturity schedule and the sinking fund.
Yeah. So if you want to look at probably page six of my handout that just went around the table. In, in the orange column on page six, that's.
I did.
On the other hand out. Yeah, yeah. So.
Oh.
Yep. So what you're looking at is the resolution and I think to answer your question, it'd be easier just to look at, at my handout. Column three of page six. If you remember from January, this additional 15 million is utilizing what we call a wraparound structure. And so all the principles out there in 2052 and 2053, it creates level debt overall when we kind of think about all the other pieces of the district's debt. We have to file a statement with Department of Community and Economic Development that shows level or declining debt when we factor in all of your, your pieces. And so that accomplishes it. It's the, it's the structure that allows for the lowest impact to the taxpayers. So that's why you see kind of a wonky, two big principal payments out there at the end.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Scott? All right. If not, I will take a couple of minutes here to review the resolution. My name's Erica Wyble. I'm with McNeese Wallace and Eric. And the resolution that you have either in front of you or virtually in front of you this evening has been prepared by McNeese. It's been prepared in accordance with the Local Government Unit Debt Act, and that's the state statute that tells us how districts can issue debt like this. And this resolution has been reviewed and circulated among the working group, which does include your solicitor as well. So the resolution authorizes the district to issue general obligation bonds in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $21 million. Those proceeds will be used by the district to undertake a number of different capital projects, including the renovations to some of the district's elementary schools. Proceeds will also be used to finance the cost of issuing the bonds. As Scott stated in his presentation, this is a parameters resolution. So that means the resolution is authorizing certain parameters by which the bonds can be issued. And if you turn to section 11 of the resolution, you'll see those parameters. Scott highlighted those big ones. You know, the resolutions are that can't issue bonds that exceed $21 million or a maximum interest rate of 6%. Although the resolution itself is authorizing bonds in the maximum amount of $21 million, again, we expect that to be much closer and right around that $15 million mark. The use of this inflated number just gives flexibility to Scott and his team when they're pricing the bonds. These are general obligation bonds and what that means is the security for these bonds is the full faith, credit and taxing power of the district, as is the case with all general obligation debt of the district. This resolution does also authorize the proper officers of the district to take incidental steps, so to execute the documents and takes the necessary steps that'll be required to fulfill the issuance of the bonds. And as Scott alluded, it will also authorize you to submit to DCED a debt statement that shows that by issuing these bonds, you are still within your debt and borrowing capacity, which you are. And so McNeese has prepared that with, with Raymond James and we will submit that on your behalf after the adoption of this resolution. Any questions that I can answer about the resolution?
We either perfectly understand it or don't know what they ask.
Success then.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, thank you. We appreciate your time and your work.
Thank you.
Review and approval of clear ID proposal, Mrs. Hansinger?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
So within the last couple of weeks, Dr. Hartman, Sarah Schaefer and I have been in contact with a gentleman from a company, Thompson Reuters, virtually to review a program that they have. What they do is they gather and have a very large database full of information about people's residencies, and this is nationwide. And what is of interest to us is if we provide them with specific information, we can verify that a student that is at, placed at another school, you know, for certain special services or even with the cyber tuition, if they are still currently a resident of our district or not. The benefit here is that if we find out that they are no longer a resident, they've moved, they did not notify the cyber charter school, they didn't notify us, not realizing that they had to, then we can go back to the cyber charter school and have them issue a corrected invoice, removing those tuition payments from, from the bill. So if we were to move forward right now with a 36-month agreement, we have the option to term earlier if we choose to. If we even found that there are two regular ed cyber students that are no longer a resident of CV, we could basically recoup one year's cost just right off the bat. Go ahead.
I just wanted to mention, so this kind of came about, the gentleman from Thomas Reuters met with the superintendent's, our Lancaster Lebanon superintendent's group and shared, there are two districts currently in our IU utilizing this. Both have reported, one, one is just kind of getting it launched, but they've already, based on some preliminary reports they run, think it's going to be successful. The one district, I don't want to mention that district. I will say it's, it's a significantly smaller district than ours. They flagged 20 families that they were paying their cyber school bill for that no longer lived, lived in their district. Sharing some of the data, you know, there's no guarantee, but, but, but from the schools in Pennsylvania that this company has worked with, there isn't a school that has implemented this, that, that hasn't at least identified enough families that aren't living in their district, but yet the district is paying their cyber bills, that, that this hasn't paid for itself. So I'll say there's a lot of traction for this. We got consortium pricing through the IU and that even though there's currently two schools using it, all of Burke's County Intermediate Unit is using it. And based on the last meeting I had with our superintendent's group, it looks like pretty much every other district in Lancaster County at least is at the same point we are. They're recommending this to their board as something that we bring in. And we at least try to see if we can, we can recoup some of that cyber funding that we're, we're losing, that we've talked about ad nauseam. There's other uses for it as well. It can help with, you know, tracking down students that sometimes we lose track through because of, that's why Ms. Schaefer's been involved, some of our homeless population. Really it uses a national database to really look at like most recent addresses that people are filling out on things like when they apply for credit cards or, or apply for different things. It has, gives us access to that database. But even going into our conversation from last week with students who have lunch debt and things like that, I could see some benefits to us maybe being, being able to identify, okay, or is some of the reasons students, we're not getting this money from students or families just because they're, they're not even living in the district anymore. You know, believe it or not, it's more frequent than you would realize that sometimes families, for whatever reason, they have circumstances that they just up and leave and they, you know, coming in and going to their child's school office to, you know, unenroll them isn't their top priority. So some, we have, we have students who are on our books sometimes who, who aren't even living in our district and they, they're wrapping up attendance fees and lunch fees and things like that. So we think this is a tool that ultimately will help, help in those areas as well.
I would assume this is to some extent a two-way street.
Yes.
Where if we find someone that doesn't live in our district, you find someone from another district that does, which leaves one set of, of students who have simply withdrawn from cyber school and the cyber school chooses not to remove them from the bill. So I don't know what the proportion is there, but I'm sure all three happen.
Oh, yes. And I do want to mention too, that Ms. Upton does her due diligence in trying to verify addresses. This just gives us more teeth in doing so.
Easy worthwhile.
You were recommending a 36-month.
36 months, yes.
Okay.
And we, we can certainly.
Meaning what exactly?
Meaning that we do have the option with proper notification to end the agreement early.
Without penalty. Correct.
Because. I mean, obviously I asked you to, asked you to know how often this happens, but if we would do it for one year and every five years do it again, kind of thing, would, how often is families moving out of the district, sending their kids to cyber school, where all, you know, things align for this, to pay for three years? Would it be wiser to pay for one year and then for a year or whatever?
And then do it again.
Or you really think there's an actual benefit to pay for three consecutive years?
I, I think we could take it on one year at a time. You know, we, if we went with the three-year agreement, we have a lower monthly fee, lower annual fee.
And you cancel that after one year?
Yes. Yes.
My, my problem with that would be is if you only do every four years, you're going to find people that you've been paying for, for four years and you can't recoup that.
Correct.
That, that's gone. So it would be difficult for this to be worth its while if we didn't keep it up to date, I, I would think.
Yeah, I would be curious to, to know the results of this when they initially do it, see how many.
So one of the benefits of bringing this to you this evening is that if we can, if we provide them with a, an approved agreement or a purchase order, they can begin some of the setup initially and they wouldn't charge us for the month of May and June. The invoicing would be effective for July 1, but this would give us like a little jump start trying to look at our current information, current listing of students that are enrolled in these programs and maybe reach back to this current, this past year too, and be able to reduce some of the costs as well as looking forward when we have new families.
So we need.
Yeah.
Well, we usually get a regular cyber charter report every year. Perhaps you can make a note to include in that report the results of this.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Is there, is there anyone already like, because I, I see this, basically this is access to a database with some training on how to use their database to find out the information and see who's here and who's not. And I imagine that's where the rigmarole happens. It's like checking students' names and stuff. So I understand the need. It's going to take, we have a large school district. It's going to take a while to move through. Is there anybody, or is there any role that is actively always keeping their eye on that now where they're trying to check things? Or is this kind of a jump start to this whole idea of let's really dive in and find it? Or is there somebody already assigned to trying to find that task?
Yeah. Ms. Upton and Maria Aradondo are registration support staff. They try to keep up on that, verifying addresses, sending out mailers, trying to confirm. And if, if a letter comes back as undeliverable, then that's one of our clues that yes, okay, something happened, they moved. This just gives us a lot more powerful information.
Sure. Okay, cool.
Any other questions or concerns? If not, we'll wait for the next cyber report.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Can we have an approval this evening? Okay, good.
Absolutely. I'm trying to take, like to move, I think we're going to have to do these separately. I will take a, a motion to approve this contract.
Do you approve, a motion to approve the three-year specifically?
Yes, you might as well.
A motion to approve the three-year contract with the Thomas Reuters cleared for school districts.
Second.
We better do a roll call vote.
Mrs.? Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Hurst?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Mrs. Kapka?
Aye.
Mr. Genzel?
Aye.
Ms. Trowbridge?
Aye.
Mrs. Groff?
Aye.
Dr. Martin?
Thank you all very much.
District policies. Dr. Hartman?
Sure. So this is just a, a first reading of policies that we were bringing back to the board. These are ones that in our comprehensive policy review, we either put a pause on or had some additional time we needed in order to go through them. So as we mentioned before, when we first gave these to the board, just to take a look at, a lot of them have to do with, were, were things that we wanted our health team to take a look at. So policies that involve something that has to do with, with our medical processes, our nursing processes, field trips, health examinations, diabetes management, et cetera. So those are on there. In addition to that, the one that kind of is outside of that that I would mention is policy 001, our name and classification, which previously we mentioned, that's just due to our district office moving from the old district office here to Mount Sydney Road. We had to update that in school board policy and policy 1101, which is our mission and vision and values, which, which we made some updates to based on feedback through the comprehensive planning process. Happy to answer any questions or we still answer questions when it comes to second reading, when we have that.
We'll take a motion to approve the first reading of the listed district policies. I move.
Do you approve the listed district policies?
I second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstentions? If not, they are approved. Health E-Tools, Mrs. Schaefer?
Good evening. I'm here to present a tool for our health rooms and also to seek your approval for that tonight. We have been working off of Sapphire for a number of years, trying to make the decision how to move from off of Sapphire and how we would be able to use our screenings in a much better way, have our, our office appointments, our medications, basically our entire health system. Power School is not able to support that for us. So there is a, a, a long-term vetting process and determining which was going to be the, the program that we were going to use. So through a tech review and through our nursing team headed by Nancy Lopez, they have recommended that this tool, which is called Health E-Tools or Healthy Tools, be brought for approval. And we're looking for a three-year contract for this.
Questions or concerns? If not, we will need approval for this contract. That means a motion.
I move that we approve the contract, contract for the Health E-Tools contract.
Will we roll call for this?
Mr. Hurst?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
And Mrs. Kapka?
Aye.
Mr. Genzel?
Aye.
Ms. Trowbridge?
Aye.
Mrs. Groff?
Aye.
Dr. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Thank you. Dr. Hartman, flexible instructional days.
All right. I'm going to turn things over to Dr. Mann, who's our flexible instructional day guru and.
I wouldn't use the term guru. Well, good evening, everyone. FIDS is what the state calls flexible instructional days and we have to make application for us to use them. The application is good for three years. This past year, we didn't apply for it and we were fortunate enough, didn't, didn't necessarily need it. What you have attached here are two things. One is the document that, that Mrs. Groff needs to sign that I need to have with the application I have to send up to the state. The other one is really an outline of the program itself, the different procedures and so forth. What I have to submit to the state is basically this outline and the detail along with that. In addition to several exemplary lesson plans, what a, what. in addition to several exemplary lesson plans, what a lesson plan would potentially look like. So, that's what the application is. It's due June 1, so that's why we came tonight. We'll need approval tonight so I can get this up tomorrow. Our goal is to get it up tomorrow in the event that there is something missing that we have a little time to resubmit then.
Questions? I think we've gone over this before with our calendar. With Arnon, I will take a motion to approve the flexible instruction day application.
Motion to approve the flexible instruction day application. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? If not, you've got your approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or concerns on the finance and operations report? Are there any questions or concerns about the curriculum and instruction report? Do we have any federal funds issues?
No issues at this time.
Okay. And we will move on to board reports. Unfortunately, the IU has still not gotten us this month's updates, so I'll have that on next month's. The only thing I would mention on the PSBA report is, for some reason, PSBA is really full steam ahead on these different types of advocacy. You knew they were doing cyber schools, and they switched to put emphasis on mandates, and now they've added infrastructure. So, I have brought along the short form of the letter that I told you I would provide after the meeting. Anyone that wants to have that letter is welcome to look at what they recommend. The full-length letter is on the web page. I couldn't make a copy because it's one of those where there's an inset with the body of the letter, and you can scroll through the inset to see the whole letter, but you can't see the whole letter at one place. And it's an automatic, where they would send it in for you. I don't think there's anything else unless anyone has any questions about what PSBA is doing. If not, the academy has not met yet, but we are, I will tell you, we are looking at a new location. As soon as we get that settled, I'll give you those details. Mr. Hurst, is anything good happening at the CTC?
Yeah, a little bit.
Oh, good.
I have some links on there that I would encourage you to look at at some point, since I wasn't here for the last month's meeting behind. So, we had three students of the month, two for March, one for April, so congratulations to them. Also, congratulations to Lindsay Florin for being, getting second place in the skills action contest in the medical assistance program. News article up there, and there's the application status for secondary and also the material handling program. There's a video up there. You don't need to watch it here, but I think it's six, eight minutes, something like that. But I would encourage you to watch it. It's really good. It explains that program. It's the first and only one where it's in direct relation with the IU, and you have to have an IEP as a student to enroll in it. And it's actually a really good program. They're really proud of it, and I think they're doing very well with it, so. That's it.
That's it.
Want to say anybody has any questions?
No information on your search.
Um.
That's okay.
It's paused for a moment.
Okay. That's fine. That happens.
Yes. That's all I can say at the current moment.
Can I ask, is the CTC still maintaining a very long waiting list of kids who can't get into the programs that they want?
On certain ones, certain, there's always certain, yeah, classes and stuff that run heavier than others.
So, do you get those applications now for next year or?
Yes. Yeah, because the secondary report is for next year.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
All right. Anyone else have any questions about the CTC? Construction team, any information?
That report's attached. I attended a soccer game recently at Leola. I can confirm the retention pond was very pondy. Guess you wanted to know. It was doing its job well.
Okay.
Right, Ken?
Yeah.
No, it's nice to see the building, particularly those inside shots. If you haven't taken a look, it's nice to see the building coming together. There's new skylights on the roof and stuff. It's cool. And if you go by there, the building is looking a lot different. They're painting it. The additions of the white really change it up. So, I'm looking forward to see that back entrance done. That's kind of where a lot of the culmination's happening, so. The activity around the building continues, and it's all cordoned off for construction, so I get to see it quite often with soccer games.
It's nice to have a construction project that seems to be going so smoothly. Any questions for the construction committee? Under other reports, I read this out, and Dr. Hartman provided this earlier, but I wanted to bring attention again to the Conestoga Valley Education Foundation. They gave us grants this year. They are, as usual, extensive and varied, and they're very generous. And at this point in the meeting, is there anyone in the public who would like to address the board on any issue at all? Is there a vice president's report?
Not tonight.
Any board initiatives or announcements? Well, then, you have the dates for next week. The only thing I would try before we adjourn is to remind you all that tomorrow's an election day, and I always encourage board members to set an example for our students by letting your children see that you go and vote. Other than that, I will take a motion for adjournment. We will not have an executive session, but I will announce that the board is going to stay for a few minutes to do a review of the latest sunshine rules on executive session.
Motion to adjourn to executive to review sunshine.
No, it's not an executive session.
No. Motion to adjourn to a non-executive hangout to review sunshine law.
All those in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.